Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of October 19th. We're going to start this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, but we have a Troop Six here, and they're going to lead us in that Pledge of Allegiance. If you could come up, please. Want to come right in the middle? Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk.
The first item on this evening's agenda, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Accepted.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is a submission of minutes of previous meeting of Item A1.
Move the meeting report is accepted as written.
Second? There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to add a brief item to the executive session concerning possible negotiation in connection with the planning of the new Bristol Marina.
I'll second that suit.
Mr. Solicitor, you just walked in the door?
Yes.
So what's the, um, the, uh, what is the reasoning under the Open Meetings Act for the executive session? Is this acquisition or disposition of real-
It concerns a negotiation.
Negotiation isn't enough. Is this because it concerns acquisition or disposition of real property?
Well, I'd always understood that negotiation was one of the numerous-
Negotiation over, over property is, and property rights are, yes. If it's, it's concerning, um, property rights, um, then it is. Simple negotiation for personality is not. If it concerns property rights, including repair and rights, that would be, that would be doable.
Well, that's a big surprise to me after years of involvement with-
I mean, that's my understanding that I think you're looking for.
If that is the advice of, uh, this council, I will withdraw the motion and try to subsequently convey my suggestions to the members.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the, uh, the next item is Item C1. This is the second reading for adoption of Ordinance 2016-13. This is to create a stop at the intersection of Belvedere Drive at Sunrise Drive.
Motion to adopt the second reading of the ordinance of Chapter 16 related to the stop sign at Belvedere Drive in Sunrise with the administration and all state laws and town ordinances approved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item is Item C2. This is the first reading of Ordinance 2016-14. This is to create, or actually formalize, two no parking, or rather four no parking areas adjacent to the Benjamin Church Manor driveways.
Motion to approve the first reading for adoption.
Accepted.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just real quick, um, I, I believe this is a great change in our, um, ordinance for this, uh, location to do with the seniors and their, um, exiting out of Benjamin Church. It's been discussed for a long period of time, so I'm glad we're taking a movement on this.
As everyone will recall, the majority of the council was at a meeting with our, well, a gathering with our seniors at Benjamin Church, and this was brought to everyone's attention again, and this was the next step to get that done. And what we're speaking of here is no parking at the exits onto Chestnut Street on both sides to make a much clearer path and much better view for people driving on Chestnut Street and actually people driving out. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, um, the next item is Item D1. This is the petition of Cheng Yang Yu, the new owner doing business at Sawa Asian Bistro, 531 Wood Street, requests council consideration for a vittling license. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, water pollution control to approve, and also the fire chief and town administrator also to approve. I believe the, the gentleman is, is here, may wish to, uh, add anything that the council would like to know about this particular application.
Please. Right up there. Please. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
We like to give everybody an opportunity for, uh, sometimes a 30-second commercial is what we call it. So is, is there anything that you wanted to add? And I'm certain the council may have a question for you or two. Would you like to tell us about what's going on and what you're looking for?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
So, um, I'm new owner here, will be take over the, um, Sawa Asian Bistro. Yes, uh, this is the Chinese restaurant and service with Chinese food and Japanese food. Um, we make, we have for, for the alcohol license, and we, uh, service very great Chinese food and Japanese sushi. It's around, um, Bristol and, uh, Portland, so we also made the delivery. And I will take over this restaurant, uh, beginning the, the day, it's, uh, October 21st.
October 21st.
Yes.
Okay.
That's great.
Does this council have any questions?
Does it need to get a new alcohol license transfer? Do you need to get your alcohol license?
It's coming.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, we're getting there in a second.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the vittling license based on the recommendations Town Administrator and the, uh, and the Fire Chief to approve.
Second for discussion. Andy?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman and, and members of the council, um, and this may be a little premature with just the vittling license. I know the, the liquor license isn't going to be coming up till after it's advertised. But my understanding is that this is the same legal lot as the property which had the address of 125 Franklin Street where there was a fire. And generally, before licenses are renewed or transferred, all municipal taxes and liens, et cetera, need to be paid. And there's a considerable lien that the town has on this piece of real estate for its cost in demolishing the property that's technically next door, but technically on the same legal lot as this property.
We appreciate that reminder, and I would accordingly add an amendment to the motion to include those, uh, steps and provisions.
Second. So clarity question on that one, Andy, is that you, sir, are, this gentleman here is not the owner of the property, but the owner of the business, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so-
But-
Please.
Sure, no, I mean, the, the owner of the property of, has an interest in it as well.
Certainly.
This is their tenant, they're presumably getting rent. None of that rent has gone to pay the obligations that are due the town of Bristol. That's why the concern is, and that's generally, um, if this were, if this were a different piece of property, that would be different, but this is the real property on which we have a lien on that real estate. And theoretically, we could, we could, we are pursuing the lien in court, and if we sold the property, this gentleman would be thrown on the street because we'd become the new, we could conceivably become the owners of the property by selling the lien if no one bought it, or someone else could buy it. So that's why it's related, even though it's different entities.
Andy, what is the approximate amount of that lien? Do you know? I'm sorry, do you know the approximate amount of that lien?
Um, I believe, it's in the mid $30,000 range because-
Are you aware of that? Were you aware of that when you took over the, the business?
Um, I just ran, ran the, the, the address, I just rented, but I just buy the, um, the business, so I'm not the, the house rent, house, house owner.
You don't own the property, you just rented it?
Yeah, I just own the, the restaurant inside the property, yeah, and the business, yeah.
Well, I think this is a serious issue that we need to figure out how to address because the lien will never get paid if, if you continue to, continue to go forward with the, the sale is all closed, everything is set on the business?
No, right now it's still on, um, just, everything just continue, keep going. It's, it's never closed.
You, no, 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 I mean, the, the sale of the business, is that all completed?
Yeah.
It is?
Everything, everything keep the same.
You, no, I'm sorry, but you haven't bought the business yet because you haven't gotten the liquor license yet. You wouldn't buy the business without the transfer of the liquor license, correct?
The liquor license will be transferred next month. I also need to, uh-
Well, that, no, that, that's the point. It's, it's up to this council to decide whether to transfer the license next month. It's not a given. That's why, that's why the concern is, have you already, that you, you don't want to buy it until you've got a liquor license as well.
So, Andy, what is your suggestion in regards to this particular item?
My suggestion would be to continue the vittling license to next month and hopefully that be able to have everything worked out by then.
I would ask, I, I agree with that. I would ask that, Andy, if you could take a moment to speak to this gentleman-
Sure.
And, um, and if, and maybe set up a time if he needs someone else to be with him to make sure he fully understands what that is. Do you have an attorney that works with you on the closing of the business?
For-
A lawyer that was, that's working with you for the purchase of the business? Not sure. So, well, let's do this, if, so-
I'll give him my card so he can-
That would be, I think that's an excellent idea. So, what was suggested here tonight is that we continue this to our next meeting, which is, remind me, Mr. Clerk, when our next meeting is?
November 16th.
November 16th. And that's not a no or a yes, that's just to continue so these particulars can be straightened out prior to us making a decision on whether or not to grant this vittling license. You're talking about also the liquor license, that would be at our next meeting, too. So, the, our solicitor will take the time he did explain what, what he shared with us to make sure you're understanding on it and what the next steps are. So-
Okay.
The suggestion was to continue this item.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to amend my original motion to continue to the November 16th?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to amend my original motion to continue, um, the vittling license and the liquor license to the November 16th meeting.
I'll second that, I hope that it all gets worked out.
So just the vittling license is on here, so if-
The next one would be-
It wasn't on here.
Separate item.
Okay, okay, just the vittling.
So, so because he doesn't, because the license hasn't been transferred, the own, old owner can continue to sell?
That, that's correct, yes.
Correct, so continue to be open under the old-
That, that's right. That would actually present another problem if you, if you granted the vittling license to this one, then you've got one party with a vittling license and another with a-
Well, it's a little further comp, there's a little further complication. What I was going to inform the council is that the gentleman intended to, uh, begin operations tomorrow and had, was under the understanding that because the liquor license would be in, in a, um, basically sort of a hiatus period, that he would have to suspend the sale of alcoholic beverages until the liquor license was resolved. I believe he intends to, to start now. I will tell you, these transfers at this particular location have always been a little complicated.
Have you, um, have you, you've never been involved with the ownership of this property, of this business before, though, have you?
No, yeah.
But you, you've, have you owned other restaurants like this?
Yeah, before I was in New York State.
New York?
I have for experience for running the restaurant about more than 10 years, so, um-
So, the recommendation from our solicitor is to continue this item, so these things that were brought up, including a lien that is from the town on the property for approximately $30,000, um, so we can have those things straightened out before we would transfer anything, and that's our policy, is that all of those liens and loans have to be satisfied before we would transfer anything. So, our solicitors will take the time with you or, and anybody else that you'd like to have with you, uh, to make sure that you're clear in understanding on it, and we'll take all the time that you want. But we're going to continue this to the next meeting because we cannot, uh, grant the transfer. We're not going to grant a new vittling license, uh, until we have all of these things straightened out. It's not a no, it just means that we need some more information and things straightened out first. So, does that make sense?
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other, uh, discussion? No? So the motion and a second to continue this to our November 16th meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So, Andy, can you take a moment?
Sure, right, and then the next one, you're still going to go ahead and call for the public hearing for this for November 16th, correct?
Okay, yes.
My, my recommendation would be that.
Thank you.
The, the next item, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, this is the petition of JNY LLC doing business at Sawa Asian Bistro, 531 Wood Street, requests council consideration for transfer of Class BV intoxicating beverage license to Cheng Ling Yu for IFC Incorporated. This should be new owner, and this would be the call for public hearing for November 16th.
Motion to call for a public hearing scheduled for the Town Council meeting November 16th.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? So we just called for that public hearing, that'll all be talked about at our next meeting. So we have a motion and a second for public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the next item is Item D3. This is the petition of Hildeberto S. Moitoso for Viola's Liquor Store doing business at Viola's Liquor Store, 219 Wood Street, requests council consideration for transfer of Class A intoxicating beverage license to Michael S. Brito Jr. for 12th Night Sales Incorporated, new owner. Call for a public hearing, uh, also on November 16th.
Also, Mr. Chairman, call for a public hearing on November 16th for this item also.
Second? There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is the petition of Richard Mediris and others, 302 State Street, request for four-way stop at State Street and DeWolfe Avenue. You have late item recommendation provided by the Town Administrator and Chief of Police, which I believe is to continue.
Yes, F1A.
I believe the police department, if I may, is going to do a 30-day review prior to, um, also continuing this item, and after the conclusion of the review, that's when we'll, uh, schedule it to be on our docket, so I think it's good to continue this item to a council meeting that is after 30 days. Would that be correct in saying?
I think that's a prudent way to handle this, and I would move that we-
November 16th.
Accept that advice.
That wouldn't be 30 days. 30 days, so.
Okay, so the meeting after November 16th?
Right, which is to be determined.
To be determined.
So, so that would be the next meeting following the organizational meeting?
Captain McNally, oh, welcome, Captain McNally. He's sitting in for the chief chiefs at the chiefs, uh, police chiefs convention. This suggested, your recommendation suggested a 30 days. Our next meeting is November 16th, which is a little less than 30 days. Is that enough time to make those recommendations, or would you like that at our following meeting?
I think we stick with the 30-day recommendation, we push it ahead to the next meeting.
Okay. So the motion, uh, I'm sorry, the recommendation is to our meeting yet to be determined, which is typically would be three weeks after that, typically, after our November 16th meeting.
Well, that's the organizational meeting, right? So it would be the first, the first full meeting-
Yeah, we don't usually have business at that. It'd be, it'd be the first full meeting of December. First full meeting of December.
Right.
Would you like me to amend that? The first full meeting after the reorganizational meeting, which I believe is December 7th, or to be determined?
Well, be, be, to be determined.
Okay, so.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is the petition of Matthew Calderiso Jr. of 12 Bay Street, requests council consideration to remove an accessible parking space at 33 Oliver Street. This is the first reading. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Director of Public Works, and Chief of Police, all to approve.
Make a motion, this constitutes the first reading.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is Item F3. This is the petition of Susan Rancourt for Road Races and Event Incorporated in partnership with the 4th July Committee, request to hold third annual road race on July 1st, 2017. You have recommendation provided by the Town Administrator and Chief of Police to approve with certain conditions.
They, they held this last year, correct? And there weren't any issues with it, right?
Last couple of years, it's been a success.
Well-run, too, I understand.
Yeah.
No joke there, sorry.
So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the July 1st date for the request of Road Races and Event Incorporated in partnership with the Bristol 4th July Committee, with all the conditions that are attached by all the proper departments of the police administration and fire department.
Second? There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is, excuse me, Item F4. This is the petition of Michael Hoffman, 6 Francis Street, requests council consideration for a no parking space on Wall Street across from the driveway of his business. You have a recommendation provided by the Town Administrator, Director of Public Works, and Chief of Police, all asking for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the no parking space-
Second.
-based on the recommendations.
Okay, now, just, just so that you know, the travel of this will require that it, there will be an ordinance that will have to be drafted. Okay, so the, the, it would be to, I guess, to approve conceptually and to forward it to the solicitor for ordinance language.
So moved. Second? There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, um, the next item is the petition of, of Leonard P. Sanford III for the First Baptist Church at 250 High Street, request council permission to install accessible walkway and signage on the town common in the vicinity of Wally School. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Director of Parks and Recreation, the Director of Public Works, and the Chief of Police, uh, in, um, seem to be in concurrence with the request.
So this is a request to put in accessible ramp to the north side of the church, and the reason why it's in front of us is that it's part of the south side of the church? The clerk just corrected me, to the south side of the church, and, did you want to share a little bit more?
Toward the south.
It's actually on the east side.
East.
We've all been corrected here this evening, thank you for coming, we appreciate that. Could you state your name for the record?
It's Leonard P. Sanford III.
Thank you. Why don't you tell us a little bit?
How far will this, how far will this be from the back of the church?
Uh, it's coming out the back door of the church, heading to the parking lot behind Wally School.
So how wide will the walkway be?
Probably 42 inches, 48 inches in that neighborhood.
So it'd be right at the back door and extending north to the-
Northeast.
Wall Street, Wally Street, little parking place?
Yeah, because the way the pitch is there, if we come straight out and go due north, the shortest route, we'd end up in a puddle.
Well, the only thing I would say, if the council approves this, you need to consult the, uh, head of DPW about the exact placement of it and not to conflict with parking in that Wally Street area.
We've done that.
Well, I mean, and I think the, the parking isn't technically, I mean, people, I mean, I walk through this, this area all the time. I think sometimes people park there and block that access between the Wally School, and they probably shouldn't be doing that, but if they park just along the designated parking area, um, along the common, then it wouldn't interfere with the area that you're talking about anyway.
Right.
Right? And that, that puddle, you're right, is always there, for the most part.
I'm in support, I just wanted to ask you, are you doing anything to the church, or is it, it's going to use the same door in the back and just kind of comes in?
It's going to be the same door at the back, the ramp is inside, it's going to be on level, you know, basically a level two, thing, just like a sidewalk.
That helps a lot, the ramp.
There's no-
I think that'd be very good, yeah.
No, no pitch there or anything to contend with.
Beautiful.
I, I look forward to you to, uh, commentate this situation. If I could just ask the Director of Public Works, um, just, uh, his input on this so we can get it all right, uh, make sure it's a smooth process on both sides. I also noticed some notations from the historic district, um, and also the curb cuts and everything that's involved, and I'm sure through the administration, Tony, that the building permits will be all equitable, um, to this plan and specs.
There's no curb cuts involved.
Yeah, you happen to come right on in between those two, in those areas where they have the little thing.
Yeah.
I, I had conducted a review of this, and I think you have my comments. Really, the only thing I recommended is, um, I think somebody mentioned going before the Historic Commission, because I do believe that it's within their jurisdiction for approval, I guess. And then the other thing was that the sidewalk itself met the town and ADA criteria, you know, to ensure that we have the proper width. Pitch is not going to be a problem, the slope of it should never be a problem based on what I see out there, the elevation of the door that they want to get into and the elevation of the parking lot.
And that, that's the importance I have, is the specs, that it's all ADA accessible, and it's by state code and law, so that way you're accommodated and everyone's accommodated, that's what I want to get to, so.
And I would, I would recommend further that it be a concrete sidewalk as opposed to any other material, you know, for long-term durability and-
That's, that's what's in your petition, is to install a concrete-
So that was your expectation?
Yeah.
Spectacular.
And the paperwork has already been submitted to the Historic District Commission.
Excellent.
I'm so glad to hear that. I don't think we should ever do an asphalt sidewalk, ever in the town of Bristol again.
No, but-
Well, you, sir, sound like you're batting a thousand here. Is there a motion from this council?
Um, move that we approve, uh, this plan. Do we need to, say, pending the, any other approvals, or just, move we approve?
I think he's there.
Historic approval?
Yeah.
A second? There's a motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Just for the, for the council's advocacy, I think Mr. Sanford is well aware of the requirements of the Historic District Commission because his sister-in-law is the staff member of that commission. So, I don't think she would let him get away with it.
He said, "Don't embarrass family members," and that's a, those are words to live by, sir.
The, the next item is the membership list, uh, coming from the Christmas Festival Committee. This would be for the, uh, ensuing term.
Make a motion that we accept the list as presented, um, and just forward it to the, um, committee chairwoman, and just a quick commercial, this will be upon us pretty soon, so we always look forward to the efforts of the Christmas Festival Committee and everyone who puts their work onto this committee for a great grand illumination.
Second? There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is, the first item under Old Business, this has to do with the, uh, further discussion regarding the interconnect with East Province and Pawtucket continued from September 28th.
Mr. Chairman, we've gotten a, um, drawing of this and how it's all laid out, which looks like some improvement over the last meeting's discussion. However, I am not myself quite clear on whether or not they've enlarged all of the pipes from eight inches to 12 inches that are going to be put in new. I think we have the understanding that they don't necessarily have to replace existing smaller pipes at this juncture, but I think they should not put any new smaller ones in because they could, for very little money, put in new larger ones. So I'd like to just suggest that the council proceed with a bit of caution to ascertain if, if that, uh, point of view is to be followed. That is to say, to put only new pipes that are larger.
I agree with Councilman Herishoff. Also, um, on October 6th, myself, Chairman Claro, and Representative Marshall attended the workshop with the discussion of the pipeline and the meters that was discussed last meeting for our residents in all three towns. I'd like to thank our directors, Frank Sylvia and Georgina McDonald, and Paul Bishop, to be very vocal. They were very crucial questions on the plan that was laid out by Executive Director Marshon, uh, at this last meeting, and there was a lot of clarification on, you know, the know, the need for the meters, but is there a need to replace all of the meters? At the end of the discussion, with some funding mechanisms from their guidance of their treasuries, that gives them guidance of the BCWA, there's still a million dollars left from a recent bond, and also, close to $400,000 part of the state revolving fund. When this discussion came up, the question was, the antiquated meters that they're in discussion about, can those be replaced with that amount of money? And the answer was yes. So, the workshop ended with a very good discussion going forward, where the rate payer wouldn't be affected right now if they were just to go and proceed doing the meters that needed to be upgraded. By going the whole way and the whole contract, the life expectancy was fifteen years, and then we would be left with replacing all of them all at once. The questions were maybe in phases, as those meters need be to be replaced, might be the better option for the rate payer. So, the conclusion was that they continue the item to discuss on where they're going to go forward with the meters of the executive director, to give more clarification on how she's going to present it to this council and the other two councils and the board of why there's the need for those meters. There was always stress on the interconnect and the importance of that. Also, as Councilman Harrisoff mentioned about the pipeline, the funding for that first phase to the Kent Tower, for that four million dollars, four million gallons of water of that emergency supply, even before the redundant sources, is a valuable resource and is much needed. So, I think what he's saying is, we need to make sure that it's done right, and the pipes are the right size, so we don't have to go back after. So, it was a very productive conversation, and I would just say that we, we should continue this item, due to the fact that they took a recess from their October meeting, and they will be meeting again in November.
So, would it, can we continue it to our November 16th meeting, or our next to-be-scheduled meeting?
I would recommend that we schedule it to the meeting that, possibly with the Wolfen State Street meeting, I think that would be more appropriate for the discussions that need to take place.
I'm going to take that as a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make, if I may, one further comment about the advantage of the larger pipe. Obviously, the overall reason for it is that we hope eventually some of this will be an element of the Pawtucket connection, which will save us in an emergency if the main pipeline breaks. But the interesting thing, expanding a little bit on the discussion last meeting, the area of a pipe, of course, is a function of the square of the diameter, so eight inches squared is sixty-four, and twelve inches squared is one hundred and forty-four. So, that means that the larger pipe has a cross section of 2.25 as much as the original one. But the situation's even better, because in pipe theory, the retardant is partly the friction along the walls, so if you move the walls away from some of the flow, there's less resistance to that flow. So, normally, an increase in pipe of fifty percent, which this would be fifty percent more diameter, permits about three times the flow for the given pressure. So, it's a pretty good bargain, that you just add fifty percent and you get three hundred percent.
So, that's good.
You sir are.
More fluid dynamics.
You are the consummate engineer right there, so, I agree. I, you know, and actually, Halsey brought up a good point, which is that the way it was explained by the director, the executive director, was saying that, no, it wouldn't be that way, but in fact, after your point, it actually is that way, is that they will use the larger pipe, simply put. And Counselor Stewart also made a good point, which is, is that rates are already going up with BCWA. We don't need to spend any more money right now than we have to. They do have money there, and they're going to, we'll call it, phase it in. I'm not necessarily the biggest fan of new meters, unless absolutely critically necessary. I don't think we need to spend any more there, I'd rather have money spent on our redundant water system first, before anything else. And I think we all agree on that one.
And again, I just want to. We encourage our board members not to vote on it.
Correct.
If necessary, so.
Correct.
I'm glad we took it stand.
So, we have a motion and a second to continue this to our next to-be-scheduled meeting in December, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item under old business is item H2, this has to do with continuing discussion regarding the RIPTA, Ripta bus boxes on Hope Street.
This was continued because Councilman Harrisoff was going to make an attempt to meet with representatives from Ripta. Did you have an opportunity?
No, I've not been able to, unfortunately, although I wanted to meet with the Ripter residents, but I have had a good conference with Councilman Stewart about this, and I think that I'm quite willing to at least postpone my suggested trial, and pretty much turn the matter over to the competent hands of Councilman Stewart.
Yeah, I want to thank Councilman Harrisoff, we did meet, we did walk Hope Street, and had a productive dialogue, I want to thank him for, you know, looking at every outlet, and thank Ripta for coming down, because we need to put this to rest, once and for all. One of the important factors was parking, always in our downtown for our merchants. At the conclusion of the last meeting, I think that was, what we wanted to accomplish is try to gain more parking, but given the diameters of the boxes, that's not going to happen, so Councilman Harrisoff conveyed that maybe we could put them in other placements in front of the other ones. The concern is, you know, where it is in front of Dunkin' Donuts, if we were to go on the southerly side of Hope Street, we already have a corner that is going to have modest modifications with the upcoming grant, where people can wait for the bus, there's already handicap accessibility on that corner, so these are all the type of topics we talked about, and I appreciate Councilman Harrisoff for agreeing that, although we're looking for many options, I think, given what we, we have, is probably the best solution going forward.
So, this was your agenda item, I know that we continue it because of those reasons. What's your pleasure, Mr. Counselor Stewart?
I, I would say that after our conversation, unless Council Harrisoff wants to bring it up in the future, to the future council, I believe, as it stands, I believe as a council, we address this situation with Ripta and keep the boxes as is.
Agreed. So, receive, at this point in time, a receiving file?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to receive and file, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item's item I1, this is correspondence from the Coastal Resources Management Council regarding the application of Peter Brown, 141 Berry Lane in P. C. Brink, regarding winter storage site for aquaculture oysters, the deadline for hearing is October 23rd.
Motion to receive and file, second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And following. Excuse me. That is a correspondence from the chairman of the harbor commission regarding nonprofit mooring fees.
I will again cruise myself from this matter, because I'm involved in, with one of the applicants.
Mr. Chairman and my colleagues, I spoke with the harbor master, due to the letter we got, Dominic Franco would like to continue this out to meetings, so I'd like a motion to, I'd like to make a motion to continue it out into the to-be-announced meeting. Looks like it wouldn't be this correct.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to continue, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next is from Councilman Harrisoff regarding the proposed marina.
Mr. Chairman, members, I took the liberty of writing this sort of brief memo, from the point of view that we have a nice opportunity with the last really sizable space available on the waterfront to build a marina. It could, if carried out along the lines anticipated, hold a minimum of a hundred boats, and possibly some more than that. But I think that when you have an opportunity like this, and there's going to be money available by one means or another, it's very incumbent upon the town to do it right. And maybe everybody viewing and those here, and the council certainly saw in last week's Phoenix, sort of a crying towel about the fact that we are not going to be able to access it from the land behind the marina, along the face there. But I personally think that's not a problem, because I actually believe that it's much better to accent, to access the principal piers, not from the shore, but to access it from a revised and improved church street dock. Further than that, I think it's very important for the town to make sure that the geometry is right. Now, I've been in many marinas all along the east coast of the United States, and in about half of them, they don't leave you enough room to turn your boat to get into the slips. And the reason that they do that is, they're always a little greedy, as we might be, to put as many boats as they can in the space. But I think that it's more proper to think it out very carefully, maybe use some help from some consultant who's very used to planning and building marinas, to make sure that we don't put our foot in it and build this thing a little wrong, because once we spend substantial money and it's all built, and we don't want to be in a crying towel, we want to be happy and joyous that we've succeeded in a good fashion. So, for that reason, I would like to suggest that the council consider, for not very much of a fee, engaging a consultant that might be able to help us somewhat along these lines. We have a very able harbor master in Greg, and the town has engaged PA, associates, to do the engineering design. But with all respect to PA, they're probably more capable of engineering design than they are of boating. So, I will, subsequent to this meeting, without objection, suggest to you a very outstanding consultant who might help the town by making some judgments about the overall geometry.
I can, I can speak for all of us and say that, that this is an important project, and we are in no way, shape, or form looking to move forward without it being done correctly. And I think another set of eyes, in this instance, and in any instance, is probably a very positive thing, and I think we should explore that opportunity.
Good. And in this memo, I also take the liberty of mentioning a few other matters, the width of the excess docks, so they're not, you know, if you make the excess docks too narrow, it's a little bit like the old cartoons on TV of log rolling, and you want to make sure that they're wide enough to be stable, so, all those things, just bear looking into, so we make sure we do this right.
And truly, I believe that there's a lot being done right, right now, and it might be all perfect, but another set of eyes is, is not a bad thing, especially.
Well, I quite agree about that, I think there's some good work already going into it, but maybe it's like, when you go to the doctor, you don't mind getting a second opinion.
I think it's, I think it's, what's important, too, is that, like, the point you made, Halsey, that the, you know, you don't want to cram them in just because you want to get an extra one or two, a few hundred dollars more a year, and they cram them in so much to get those extra slips, and then no one can move once they're in there. So, I mean, I think that's probably the most important point, that whoever, you know, all the parties that be that are working on this, that they understand we want to make sure that people can have easy in, easy out access, and if that costs us a slip or two, then that's okay.
I think if we follow suit to the original town fathers, if you look around at our streets, they're extremely wide, and we're very fortunate, if you look at other communities, there's lots of one ways, and we don't have that. We do have a few, but we have nice, wide roads, and to the points that have already been made, I know that is being considered, it was already being considered, but we'll make sure that it's considered yet again, so.
Everything in Bristol should be the best anywhere.
I like that.
Councilman Harrisoff, I'm sure we'll look at a lot of different iterations of the design, but I hope you'll stay, you know, continue to stay a part of it, and that's a good thing about this council administration, we've always dotted our i's, crossed our t's, and taken it slowly, and I'm sure we'll definitely take everything that you have to say into consideration.
Great.
I also would like to thank Councilman Harrisoff for his input on this, especially, I don't think he's going too far away, so if we need any further advice in the future, I'm sure we could call upon him.
So, I would say it, your motion would be to refer this to the administrator, the harbor master, and our, I don't know, Julie, you're in charge of the, are you the chairman of this capital projects committee? So, and to Julie, to act in the best interest and bring back to us some suggestions?
So, with that encouragement, I will also convey directly to all involved, the specific suggestion of a consultant for this.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for bringing up the capital projects commission, because I did not want the capital projects commission on behalf of the residents to go away on any scale of projects.
No way.
So.
So, we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, also from Councilman Harrisoff regarding a proposal for the former Enzavito property.
Maybe not all of you is know what the Enzavito property is, but it's a very fine waterfront property that the town administrator and I negotiated with a gentleman from out of town, Mr. Enzavito, and that led to the council authorizing the purchase of the property. And we've owned it now for something more than two and a half years, and I just have written another memo on this to say that it's probably time we went ahead and tried to get some advantage from having it. There's been a lot of talk about the two structures there, they're very ancient structures, not to my mind very attractive, but I recognize the advice we've gotten from some in town, and also from the historic commission in Providence about the possible value of them. But I just have presented here a brainstorming proposal. I'd like to make sure that the public, the citizens, the taxpayers who pay to this, have an opportunity to get in there and have some pleasure from that place. Right now, it's being used somewhat by the harbor master and the harbor commission for works there and repairing floats and so forth, but I've talked to Greg about that, and he's made it clear to me that he's perfectly prepared to vacate that activity and to do it elsewhere that he has in mind, so that we're free to develop it into what I would like to see as called Freedom Park. We have Independence Park, and let's have Freedom Park, and it would be a very wonderful additional element to our appreciation of our great waterfront. It borders just north of the fire station there, it borders directly with the church street dock, and the connections could be good, but it would be more appealing than the church street dock for citizens, because it could be landscaped with nice grass and a few paths and things that are suitable for family enjoyment. And so, I'd like to see, myself, that the lesser of the two buildings on the road be removed, and that perhaps we find a way through voluntary donations to upgrade the existing south building, I'm not proposing the town spend much money on this, but that south building could, without ridiculous cost, have its facade and its outside fixed up, there's just a matter of some surfacing and paint for that. I've never even been on the inside of it, and I'm not sure I want to go in, but I think that also can be renovated. And I've had discussions with a few of the Fourth of July committee about the possibility that we could, at last, place in that structure a museum of the Bristol Fourth of July. As we all know, the Fourth of July is central, is a central core to all the great things that we do in Bristol, and to our volunteerism and all. And I've heard somebody say that we don't need a museum there, because we don't have anything to show. But the truth is, with the enthusiasm we have for our Independence Day, and with people like Arthur Simpson, and Conley, and others, we could easily set forth what it's all been about, how it started, how it's continued, what has been said by the founder of it and others, and gradually, we could acquire various things that might go in there to represent what the Fourth of July means. So, I'd like to suggest that be done there, and I've gotten sort of a positive reaction to that suggestion. And so, I just offer this as a plan, and there's more in here than I've said in this verbal summary, but I hope that in future, this might be considered carefully, and that we could do something there to allow our citizens to reap benefit from the expenditure we've made to buy it.
Do you want to refer that to Diane?
So, I would like to move that this memorandum entitled Freedom Park in Bristol be circulated, to a certain extent, to the town administrator and to Diane, of course, and would urge all of you, as members of the council, to consider it as input to whatever we might do to favorably utilize this property.
Definitely, definitely help make a sound decision.
Yep.
Thank you, Halsey.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I certainly like that idea of the Fourth of July museum in that building, I believe. You're probably following up with my suggestion of some sorts to that fact, but also, the input of Council Harrisoff, of that we take this in of utmost importance with this piece of property, and as a council, we were just down there a couple of weeks ago, with some outline and plans, so, aside from the buildings, the continuation of the boardwalk as a final phase from Independence Park, like Councilman Harrisoff is stating, that will conclude all the way to the Robin Rug property, will just actually complete a beautiful waterfront that we have, and the plans that are, was proposed, just on that issue alone, aside from the buildings, is just a beautification, as Council Harrisoff put in his proposal, but more to the fact that. But more to the fact that I remember discussions in other meetings of not only Freedom Park with Councilman Harrisaw, but a Freedom Trail through Bristol, because we have so much history and heritage, that if we have all these locations, such as us making these modifications to all our parks and destinations, with the Maritime Center, Independence Park, possible Freedom Park, that actually with the Historic Preservation Society, we might be able to make a trail, as you suggested, to have insignia stamps at each location, such as other historic cities.
Good.
So, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the periodic report provided by Alan Klepper on behalf of the Bristol County Water Authority.
Motion to receive and file.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second to receive and file. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And following that is the periodic report provided by the Bristol County Convention, Newport and Bristol County Convention Visitors Bureau, Doing Businesses Discover Newport, regarding their annual audit for the fiscal year ending March 31st.
Motion to receive and file.
Seconded.
There's a motion to receive and file. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I believe the solicitor has indicated that there is not a need to have that particular executive session. He may have a different opinion when he returns from his meeting, so perhaps we could just hold off on that and get to the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
So, I had the pleasure of sitting with the Girl Scout troop, local Girl Scout troop, recently, a couple of days ago. They asked me to come down to talk about voting, what it means, what it doesn't mean. I actually reached out to the clerk before I went, and I asked him, I said, "You've done this a few times." I had too, but I said, "What have you done? What have you shared?" And one of the things the clerk brought up, and certainly this is apropos for where we are right now with the election, is that he recalls that you had to be 21 to vote. And in fact, when I was sitting with all the Girl Scouts, I pointed out to them that not that long ago, none of them would have been able to vote when they were of voting age. So, a lot has changed, and a lot of good things have changed that should be that way. All should be able to vote. And to that end, it's our responsibility to get out there and vote, whoever it is that you want to vote for, whatever you are voting for or against. Get out and vote. Take a moment and learn about the topics, but don't let that stop you. If you're not sure, we certainly have a tumultuous presidential race going on right now. Doesn't matter who you like or you don't like, and if you don't like anybody there, don't let that stop you from voting. Get out and vote on whatever is important to you, and if it's everything, then you should vote for everything. But don't let it stop you if you're not sure about this. The worst thing in the world is to just stay home. It's important that your voice is heard, however your voice is heard, and whatever it means to you to get out there. None of my colleagues know this yet. This is really neat. Rhode Island Monthly Magazine reached out to me, and they're going to do a little feature on Bristol in the beginning of next year, which is wonderful. So, we all know how wonderful Bristol is, but they're going to feature some of our beautiful areas, and it's going to be difficult for them to just find a few. But they'll get out there, and you should see that in Rhode Island Monthly Magazine coming up. This morning, finally, I had the pleasure of standing on the corner of Franklin and Hope Street as they started digging our new school flashing lights that we've been working on for a very, very long time. As I told you, I was known as the school light guy up at the State House, but this council was the driving force behind that. And just a little bit of history there is, when we did the Hope Street project, it was actually our police department and others pushed for that, and for whatever reason, the state didn't see the value of it then and then again. But a parents group from Colt Andrew School, Amy Bratzos, Nina Murphy, and Nancy Chase, I met with them about two years ago, and they asked that if this council would refocus on that, and we did. And a lot of hard work happened, and in fact, the chief pointed out to me that the State Traffic Commission said that these things usually take about a year, and it took us a couple of months to get that done. This is very, very important. Downtown, people drive a little bit faster, they need a reminder, and if the chief was here, he would tell you that first we educate, then we enforce. So, it's really important that those lights are abided. We have lots of pedestrian traffic, it's not just for the kids. It's the library, it's the post office, it's all the buildings, it's all the businesses, it's just people walking downtown. Those lights are there, and school hours, they're going to be flashing to remind you that it's a 20 mile an hour speed limit. And Captain McNally will, I'm sure that he'll nod in agreement or share a couple of words if you want, but that's, those are there to make sure that people slow down, and our police department will remind everybody first, because they'll be new. And then, what do we call them? Coupons? I think that's what the chief calls them, coupons?
Yeah. To add to that, yeah.
It's exactly what he calls them, coupons, and we will be out educating, and we also will be out enforcing, so.
So, look for that. They've dug the holes. You should see those lights go up shortly. They'll be wiring them up in about the next week or so, which is just wonderful. So, look for them, and I thank this council. It was all of us, everybody here, in fact, not just this council, the town, that did that hard work to get that done. It's really important, and I'm glad that we're in that space. So, I'm going to say one more time, get out and vote, whoever you think you should vote for, whatever you think you should vote for, but just get out and vote.
And when?
November 8th, and this is the last meeting with all of us as this council. Councilman Harrisaw is retiring, and we'll talk about that a little bit more.
One more.
We have one more together? See, I'm rushing things, apparently, so.
November 16th.
Our second-to-last meeting, but I don't rush it purposely. I, I'm sure that we all will, and we'll say it again, but Halsey's put in a lot of time and effort. This is just the culmination of the hard work and effort. There's so much that is done when the cameras go off and we have multiple meetings and things, that bus boxes and marinas and everything else, and that's just right now. So, I thank you. I know my colleagues thank you, and we wish you well in your endeavors. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah. We all like money, right? Well, I've got good news. The update on the current recycling rate has jumped to 27%, which is extremely exciting. We were at 19, and you probably wanted to know, the town has collected 185 tons more recycling over the three-year average, which equates to a savings of $10,043.64. So, I just want to thank the administration for the rollout of this ordinance, doing, you guys did a great job with the DPW, my colleagues for believing and voting on it, because it is working, it is helping the town. So, that's what we like, lots of good savings. And finally, I just want to wish my colleagues good luck that are up for reelection.
Thank you.
Administrator, good luck, and the candidates out there, good luck to all of you. And I just want to, Halsey, it's been an honor. I know we have one more meeting, but I've really enjoyed serving with you.
Thank you very much. Feelings mutual.
Yep. And to all the residents out there, get out and vote on November 8th, not November 28th or November 35th. Vote on November 8th. All right. Take care. Have a good night.
Ms. Perella?
Thank you. I have a few different issues. So, at the, before the meeting began, Melinda Howard, who is the senior community outreach manager for Smart Power, she was here, but she was also at the last council meeting, so if you were watching then, you saw the presentation, and she did leave. It's not a campaign sign for any of us, but I'll just put that up for a second, and it's "Take the Rhode Island Energy Challenge: Find Four Ways to Save Energy," and it's And one of the things that we will be doing, and I think they're in the process of figuring out where to put these, is that we can take our energy pledge, and it's very simple things. For example, washing clothes in cold water, and you'll save $108 per year. Replace light bulbs with LED bulbs and save $200 per year. So, it's very simple things that you can do. She did pass out in the green envelopes to all of us 15 or 16 of these pledge cards for us to get it started with, our family and friends, and they'll be putting these, I hope, around town, is what I think her plan is, probably here, the library, but she hasn't gotten to that yet. But there is also, I guess, for, once, as many people as we can get involved, the better, because we would be able to get or win $5,000 for energy projects here in town if we're able to get enough people signed on to this. Does anybody know how many, or is it just in competition with other communities? A certain amount. So, please take a look at this, and if you see anyone, we'll probably at the next meeting maybe know where this is. And Tony, I imagine when you set where they are, you'll put it on our website. So, I told her I would convey that to the folks here at this meeting. The other issue is talking about elections. I do want to just mention the local bond. Is there a number for that bond, Lou?
Eight.
Number eight, which is a $17 million bond to, for infrastructure projects, roads, sewer, not sewer, roads, sidewalks, the marina, you know, drainage, a whole variety of issues that really need to be done. And one of the things, while it sounds like it's a lot of money, it really, we never draw down any bond money until we absolutely need it. So, it could be several years down the road before we would draw it down. But why it's important to have is because we have been very, very fortunate in being able to access federal and state grants for our projects, and usually, those grants come with a match, and we've been able to find that match with the bond money that we've had over the years. So, when you look at Tann Yard Brook Phase One project, we paid very little. I think maybe close to 80% of that money came from the federal government, because we were able to match it. And Bristol has an incredibly good reputation. I'm always so proud, and I've heard Senator Jack Reed say this, I've heard the director of DEM, that anytime they have, you know, believe it or not, some towns can't spend their money, and anytime they find money available, they always think to call Bristol first, because they know we will always have a shovel-ready project, ready to go, that will get done on time and within the budget. And that is an incredibly great statement to hear from people who are our state and federal leaders. So, I just would encourage everyone to support our local bond issue, which is number eight on the ballot on November 8th. And with that, I'd like to wish all of my colleagues here and the candidates who are out in the, in the audience and who are out maybe campaigning, the very best on Election Day, and it's been a pleasure serving with all of you and serving the town of Bristol. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stewart?
I apologize. I just forgot to say that the troop was, troop 1172, and there's 13 girls there, and they're in the fourth grade. Lisa Cabral, Sharon Mulligan, and Bonnie Poisont are the troop leaders. We, this council, and the administrator and others have gone to so many things for the Boy Scouts, including Eagle Scouts. This is akin to that. They do wonderful work. They'll be actually here on Election Day handing out "I Voted" stickers here at Town Hall, and I wanted to make sure I added that in. Thank you.
To Councilwoman Perella's point about the $17 million bond, we live in a beautiful town, and I know it's election time that everybody's discussing of how to make Bristol better and move Bristol forward. I have been an advocate on behalf of the town of Bristol and its residents, along with my colleagues, since I took office, of our road infrastructure and drainage issues. We have so much going for us as a town, but we have to keep our infrastructure in place for multitude of reasons, whether it be economically, tourism, or for our public safety. So, 12 million of that money will be for drainage and roads to continue that. We have an outlying plan of the implementation of the road program, and those drainage projects are attached to that. And as Councilwoman Perella said, along with my colleagues, is we take this very serious during budget process of how we release the old bonds and release new bonds, with all that in a prudent way, along with open space, the marina, and municipal buildings that are in much need of repair. This money will give us that opportunity going forward, whatever council shall be here, along with the administration, to make Bristol a better place always. Friday, the request for proposal, back then, with my, the support of the colleagues, to reinstitute again once more for the solar caps at the landfill, on behalf of myself and Chairman Colero, putting that on to go forward. There was a multitude of input from the request for proposal, so I look forward to having a positive forward movement with that. Also, Find Your Energy Four, findyourfour.com. We need the numbers to ascertain that grant. Melinda Howard did have conversations with Councilwoman Perella and myself tonight. Tony, we need to discuss where we can advertise for this program, because it just falls in place with all the renewable energy projects that we've been working on to help our town with all those projects that we finished and we're going forward with. So, we'll have that discussion tomorrow. So, just go online and sign up, so we could meet that number. Also, tomorrow night, the East Bay Chamber of Commerce is holding its awards dinner. I'd just like to congratulate Lisa Riola and Waterman Brown for being Citizen of the Year. Also, Hope in Maine for being Business of the Year, and the Chamber Member of the Year is Beth Carter, so we say congratulations to them. It should be a wonderful awards dinner tomorrow night at Johnson &amp; Weill, starting at 5:30. I just, I'd like to say, wish my colleagues good luck and all the candidates for dedicating your time and service to making our town wonderful. And with that, I'd just like to thank everyone who came out tonight, and thank you, Mike Davis, and everyone viewing at home. And remember to vote on November 8th. Thank you.
Mr. Harrisaw?
Well, I'd like to echo what's been said by the chairman and other members about the importance of the election. We all have our own view of what's best for our country, but as the chairman says, do something about it. Don't just sit around and think about it, but do go out and vote. And I'd also recommend that those watching avail themselves of the quite fine booklet that's available concerning not only the candidates statewide, but the various referendum on bonds and various things to do with the state of Rhode Island. Because I think if you don't kind of study something like that or think about it ahead of time, it's difficult to make a decision in the polling place on a cold subject. It's much better to study ahead of time, and I'm not suggesting you vote for or against, but I'm just suggesting you try to be informed as possible before you do go there and vote. Now, insofar as the $17 million bond proposal in Bristol, certainly that, if passed, will enable this town in coming years to do many things. And I think it should be emphasized, though, that the prudent way to proceed, which is the way this council will proceed, I'm sure, is to combine whatever draws are made on that over the period of time ahead, combine it with grants, and particularly, if we can get some strong money from Washington, from the influence of the senators and congressmen, it would be a good thing. We've got a number of good cases for the government to support us. Certainly, the Tann Yard Brook situation is one that our congressional delegation is very aware of and been around with us, traveling to see the floods that occur as a consequence of the needs there. And it's very important that this town glean some outside money to go along with the contribution of the $17 million bond issue, so that we can preserve that bond issue to continue to service over a period of years ahead. Don't want to draw it all down immediately.
Agreed.
I'm pleased to see the downtown street sweeping is somewhat improved. Went there the other day after the vacuum cleaner went through, and it was pretty nice. It's already got leaves there again. This time of the year, it's a burden to go there quite often, I think, and clear out the leaves. And the more, the better treating that downtown area. I've been like a broken record on that for a long time, and even though I'm not going to be at this table, that broken record's going to continue, I think.
I have no doubt in my mind, sir.
Right. So, I appreciate the fact that this good council, which is always deliberate and normally has very long meetings, is having a shorter meeting tonight, because it's only 46 minutes before Hillary and Mr. Trump go at it, and I think we're all going to have an opportunity to witness that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Town administrator agenda items.
The first item, I know a couple of meetings ago, actually, maybe at the last meeting, I mentioned that we had received $56,000 grant. Well, Chief DeMello has not stopped. He's been a busy beaver, and I'll let him fill us in, but- He's been a busy beaver, and I'll let him fill us in, but we have an additional $32,000. So to his credit, I'd rather him fill us in on that a bit.
This grant is an emergency management performance grant. Specifically, I wrote this grant to address our credentialing issue, to improve our IDs for town employees. So this will give us the opportunity to get a, basically, a new ID printer and be able to have a card that is printed that's more secure, also incorporate building access into it. This does come with a match, 50% match, but I have planned on that, so we're well positioned to take advantage of the grant and move forward with that project.
Nice job. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. The other pieces, as the chairman already pointed out, the flashing lights, and I took a walk down here this afternoon. The anchors are in. The push will be coming in next, and then they'll do the electricity, and we'll have lights flashing hopefully by the end of the week.
Beautiful.
So thank you to all of them, you know, who've been involved in this endeavor. But specifically, I would say, the police department, and in particular, Captain Burke. I know he's been go-go, you know, really chasing down the, all the procedures and the funding and so forth, so he's done a great job. And obviously, he was standing proud this afternoon, this morning, there with all of us.
Excellent.
And aside from that, just wish the best to all of you, all the incumbents, and also to all the candidates that are present, and let's get out and vote November 8th.
Make a motion after we get the solicitor has to.
No. Regarding item L, with the request for executive session, we are withdrawing that request. There's nothing really to be discussed in executive session. The town of Warren, in connection with the school district litigation, as you know, the town of Bristol had appealed the decision that required Bristol to pay extra funds. The town of Warren initially appealed the part that only made it retroactive for one year. They wanted to go back, make it retroactive for a couple of years. They have since withdrawn their appeal of that request to make it retroactive. So that's, so that's good news, and there's really nothing to discuss or anything confidential about it, so it doesn't need an executive session.
So with that, I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good night, everyone.